A meeting of the North Liberty Board of Trustees to order. Our first order of business, are there any additions or changes to the agenda? There are none. Next item on the agenda, public comment, seeing no one in the gallery. We will assume that there is no public comment. Item three, we will defer for a quorum. The approval of the April minutes. And we will jump right to item number four, our staff introduction.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Emily O'Sherden-Tabor. I am the Family Services Librarian at the North Liberty Library. And my presentation tonight will be on the TVs. If any of you want more information or would like me to email you the slides, please let me know. I'm happy to share them with you. So three years ago, I became part of the Johnson County Empowerment, or the Early Childhood Iowa Board. And that is what I will be talking about tonight. Sam Turnbull is the Early Childhood Iowa Coordinator. And Lori Nash, who used to have that position, is now in the Youth and Family Services. I want to give full credit to Sam for creating this presentation for the Johnson County Board of Supervisors. I just took it, added it, and changed it a little bit, but she was kind enough to share it with me. So you may be asking yourself, what is Early Childhood Iowa? So in the state of Iowa, there is a state initiative to provide funding to children five, children zero to five, and to achieve desired results. So that facilitates communities and state governments working together. And what we do on a local level is take that to community members, agencies, and organizations working together to achieve those same results for children zero to five. Kind of be a liaison or a link between the local and state efforts. Very brief history, in 1998, coincidentally, the year I graduated high school, Transitional Board was formed, a year later in 99. Johnson County Empowerment Board was received designation from the state and began to receive funds. And then 11 years later, in 2010, the state legislation changed Johnson County Empowerment to Early Childhood Iowa. So a lot of people in Johnson County recognize the board and what they do by the name of Johnson County, or sorry, yeah, Johnson County Empowerment. So even though officially, we are an Early Childhood Iowa Board, that's why they keep the Johnson County Empowerment on there because of the name recognition. So our local Johnson County, sorry, I'm just going to call it Early Childhood Iowa because when I came on the board, that's what they were referring it, referred to as. So Early Childhood Iowa has currently 11 board members. We have, we're legally required to have representatives from business, faith, human services, consumer, health, early child, early care and education. We strive for gender balance, but as well as terms of, in terms of racial and ethnicity, urban and rural and other demographics, try to balance it out between all of our members. We also rely on the county, the Board of County Supervisors to become our, or to be our fiscal agent to represent, represent us, which is really nice. A lot of other ECI boards don't have that, and they have to either pay for it or have one of their members do it. So it's really, we're really lucky to have that in Johnson County. So the board makes funding decisions, we fulfill state requirements for reporting, and we coordinate, or coordinate the local or early childhood system along with a community needs assessment. So as I mentioned, Sam is full-time, but she also has a 15-hour clerk named Terry, who takes care of like cutting checks and making sure the budget is balanced. Overall, in the state, they have designated these results areas. So secure and nurturing early learning environments, secure and nurturing families, safe and supportive communities, ready to succeed in school, and healthy children. Locally, we have combined and streamlined those into these three results areas. Secure and nurturing early education environments, safe and stable nurturing families and homes, and then children healthy and ready to succeed in school. So our community plan is what drives us. We, sorry, I'm behind in my notes. The community assessment can be found on the Early Childhood Iowa website, which is part of the Johnson County website. And the community plan includes a description of the county, the needs of the county, a county assessments, the financial records, and then how programs in the county are meeting the results needs. What the, what may be lacking in the community. And then the board is also responsible for reviewing those and finding, helping to find things that could help fill those gaps, services and organizations. Under those results areas that I just talked about, each of them has two priorities. And under each of those priorities, there's two local, two identifying local strategies. So there's a lot that goes into all of those. This is the way that the Early Childhood Iowa Board looks on a broader Johnson County structure. So Johnson County Board of Supervisors is the big green circle. And then the lighter green circle within that is the Johnson County Social Services. So within Johnson County Social Services, you have things like mobility specialists, general assistance, CPPC, which is the Community Partnership for Protecting Children, which addresses child abuse in the county. Then you have the JJYD, which is the Juvenile Justice Youth Development, which addresses the juvenile justice system and how to keep kids out of it, or how to help decrease recidivism. And then you have the Early Childhood Iowa Board. So a quick note about this slide, I didn't want to change it because I thought it would be important to discuss it. But this slide is currently not up to date because of recent legislation. So it used to be that Early Childhood Iowa was in the middle of multiple governmental departments. We receive school-ready funds from the Department of Education, and we receive early childhood funds from the Department of Human Services. The actual state office was housed in the Department of Management, and that was to offset any thoughts about favoritism. They didn't want the, the office to be housed in a certain department and to that have, and that to negatively affect the way that funding was coming. So it was thought that if the office was housed in the Department of Education, Health and Human Services may think, well, why are we giving our money to a department that's in another, or an office that's in another department? And then the, our family support groups were overseen by the Department of Public Health. So that meant that gave tools for evaluation, also helped with policies and procedures relating to things like home visits or family groups, things like that. Due to recent legislation, the Department of Human Services and the Department of Public Health have merged. So Early Childhood Iowa with other departments are now under that department. And we just received word last week that we will no longer be receiving funds from the Department of Education, which is about two-thirds of where our funding comes from. So now all of our funding will come from the Health and Human Services, which will not probably affect fiscal year 23. However, there are some concerns that in the next fiscal year and the following years, there may be some negative impacts from some trickle-down from that. In addition, our, the office was taken out of the Department of Management, and like I said, put under the, it's not Department, but Health and Human Services. All right, so accountability within the board. The, we go for a designated process every four years. Halfway through that, there's a designation review and an audit. We have annual audits with the states. And then halfway through the year, we do some financial reporting just to make sure we're on track. And then annual performance measures as well. What we expect from accountability from our programs that we contract through is quarterly reports with fiscal and performance measure reporting, site visits, which I'll have a picture of in my next report, I went to one last week. And then ongoing communication with contracting partners. Quick look at our budget, which I don't know, sorry, why the slide is like that. But as you can see, the majority of our money came from the Department of Education through those school-ready funds, and the minority of our budget came from the Early Childhood Iowa. So our carryforward, which has the state under 20% every year, I think it was about 18 last year, turned out to be 156,000, which gave us a total budget for this year of just under, just over 1.1 million. So that was what we were working with. So after all this, you may be asking yourself, well, why the Early Childhood Iowa Board? Like, why is she talking about that? In late 2019, early 2020, when the library received our Family Place designation, the, we learned that the core components of a family place are trained staff, parent-child workshop, which we call our playful parenting group, collections, specially designated spaces, additional programs for babies and toddlers, and outreach. Family Place was a really great fit for our library because we already had very strong, we were very strong in all of these components already. And we were able to utilize the structure of the Family Place Initiative to build and expand on these core components, which we already had. However, one component where we had the least base was our collaboration and partnerships. And it is kind of small, I'll just read it. Through partnerships with health, and this is coming, sorry, from the Family Place website. Through partnerships with health, education, and human service agencies that serve family and young childrens, librarians connect to parents, to connect parents to needed community resources and enhance library services and programs. We have and will continue to have great partnerships in our community. For five and under, prior to 2020, they were mostly with recreation and play organizations, which are great, but where we were lacking was those connections to resources in our community. So joining the ECI Board has allowed me to not only gain knowledge of the bigger early childhood picture in North Liberty, in Johnson County, in the state, and nationally, but also make connections to resources that I, whether formally or informally, am passing along to parents and their children. Some examples of that is helping set up mobile WIC clinics. We have two in North Liberty now, one in the community center, and then one actually just kind of south of us at the Baptist Church. So helping WIC designate spaces for that and getting them in connection, Mike and I helped with that. Benefiting from training and knowledge that relate to early childhood. So that could be anywhere from classroom management, when I go out to do storytimes or outreach, or have storytimes or programs in the library, or also talking to parents about positive and negative things that may have happened to them in the library or out, may have happened to their children in the community or in school, and having those conversations with like a non-judgmental tone and being a, an ear to listen to someone to support them. Also to help shape library policies and procedures that support early childhood and early childhood education. Board expectations, it is, participation is number one in our board, as I'm sure you all know. Attendance is expected for the 10 to 11 meetings. They have stipulations that you cannot miss more than three board meetings in a year. Additionally, board members are encouraged to participate in outside events, work groups, committees, attending site visits, or special events, such as a celebration of the young child, Kites for Kids, Juneteenth Legislative Day on the Hill as well. So role of board members, again, I had previously mentioned community planning. So reviewing community assessments, what is needed, what is lacking, helping make those connections. My role in the board, one of my roles in the board is as a consumer, because I have a child under five. So it's really important that we have those kind of people who can say, oh, like, transportation is a big thing for my kid because my kid can't go to a preschool and then be transported back to a regular childcare center, things like that. Funding decisions, we receive an annual allocation that I had put up before from the state. And based on what we learn from our community planning, we determine priorities and then solicit funding, not only from our funds, but from other local agencies as well, trying to create those partnerships. Program oversight is the last one. We ensure that our contractors are performing and achieving the desired results. But we also look to ourselves as being stewards of the public funds and making sure that those are spent in appropriate ways. Besides being a consumer on the board, my participation is, oh, sorry, real quick. An RFP is a request for proposal. So that is when we see a need in the community, and then we put a, it's kind of like an application, it is an application, not kind of, an application out for a certain service. And then people send in their ideas, and then we go through and score them and decide if they meet the required results, if they have a good program, if they have good backing, that kind of thing. So RFP is result, a request for proposal. I am part of the education, Early Education Work Group, which includes the direct and indirect education scoring committees for when we put out RFPs. I am part of the Parent Education Work Group. I'm the liaison for that, which means that I summarize points of the work group, what our partners are doing, and any updates on programs for the, to take back to the larger group at our monthly meeting. And that also includes the scoring committee for RFPs. And then I am currently on the Executive Committee as treasurer. That's been a year, and I don't think I have done one thing as a treasurer. So this is a pretty easy, pretty easy role. We'll see how it goes for the next, I think it's a two-year position, so hopefully it continues easily. Internally, Early Childhood Iowa does a lot of programs. So this is coordinated by Sam, who is the full-time employee. They do, as you can see, last year, they've done 93 car seat installs. So they have a car seat tech, they bring them, they're shown how to, they're given a car seat, they're shown how to install it correctly, and then given the information about when you need to switch car seats and how to do that for when your child is growing. For 40 Safe Sleep Programs, the first one just happened in North Liberty a couple months ago, which is really great. They've given 25 eligible preschoolers scholarship programs, and then just general navigating of resources and referrals, and then community awareness. So those big events that I mentioned, Sam's always at them to hand out books and information about Early Childhood Iowa. The last two on there have asterisks because we have done them this year only. They're kind of one-and-dones, we're looking to try to spend our carryforward down. So we have got infant equipment and fall surfacing for in-home providers. I did not know this before we started doing this, but we bought fire-safe cribs. So if you have an in-home provider that has a fire at their house, they can just put all of the kids in one crib and kind of just push it out so that everyone is safe at the same time. And then fall surfacing is like the little, kind of squishy wood chip things that they can put in their yard, or centers can put in their playground so that it helps with not being injured during falls. The last one is IQ 4K Training. So IQ 4K is a new quality rating system for in-homes and centers. And it is much more in-depth and harder than the previous one. And so we created a Passport to Learning, which is incentives for full-time childcare workers to go do these trainings, and then they get the incentive, and then that helps the center achieve the next level of IQ four training, or IQ four designation, sorry. Externally, these are the partners that we work with. Home Ties Childcare Center, they provide a few slots that we sponsor for kids that, families that are experiencing homelessness or transient families. So they always have these three or four short-term spots that kids can go to while their parents, and it's free to the parents. So they are able to find a job and find housing, and then the kids will transition either to another funding source, or maybe somewhere else, once they've gotten a home to live in. Grant Wood AEA CART is a part of Grant Wood that goes to in-homes and childcare centers to help children who are having serious behavioral issues in a classroom not be expelled from their preschool. So they work with the teacher and the child inside the classroom, and then the family outside as well. Ark of Southeast Iowa Preschool is one of the only local preschools that will take children that have additional medical needs, such as feeding tubes, trakes, mobility issues, that kind of thing. HACAP and Head Start Wraparound, so a wraparound is you have a certain amount of hours or units, they're called, that your child is paid for to go by, to go to school, either through governmental grants, like Shared Visions or Universal Preschool. But if you work in eight to five, you need care from 7:30 to 5:30, right? You don't need just care from eight to 11. So that wraparound is what helps those parents go and do either school or a full-time job. Neighborhood Centers of Johnson County, their Parents as First Teacher Family Support is a groups that get together with, a lot of times it's immigrant or English learning language families, but not always, that just help them understand how to parent, how they can be their first teachers for their children, and have curriculum on that and support. Johnson County Public Health Childcare Nurse Consultant is someone who goes to all the childcare centers in Johnson County and helps them keep up to date with all of their, how to do first aid, how to administer medications, that kind of thing, and make sure that they are compliant. UA, United Action for Youth Young Parent Program and Home Health Visiting Program is very similar to the Parents as First Teacher. They are support groups for young families and families who have just given birth. Johnson County Social Services Childcare Wage Enhancement is a really cool program, and I really hope that it takes off. So this is funded by some ARPA money as well as a grant. And then I think the city of Iowa City has put in a bunch of money too. So this gives every full-time childcare worker in Johnson County a $2 an hour raise increase. It is working towards making childcare a more, what's the word I'm looking for? Yes, well, enticing, but also like, yes, exactly right, yes, yeah. All right, what questions, if any, do you have for me?
That's like a full-time job.
Yeah, it is a full-time job for Sam, for sure.
That's a lot of work, it's really interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know that this existed, so.
Us neither. We, like, we went and they were like, you should get on like a, like a board or something. I don't remember exactly what they called it, but we're like, we don't, we don't have anything like that in Iowa, we're pretty sure. And they were like, yes, you do.
Yes, you do.
We're like, okay, well, we'll look at it when we get home.
I didn't remember that.
Yeah, I, it like sticks out in my mind so much, because it's like, you don't know what you don't know, right? And like, the farther you get into it, it's like, wow, there's so much that goes into it. And really, our county is so, so lucky that we have the support of the supervisors, of support of, you know, different organizations that are in the, in the county.
So how, I was wondering, you had mentioned how it had, knowing, being on the board has helped with your job right now. And so I was just wondering, what was at least one way that you felt that?
That it's helped?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry. That's okay. I think probably, there's many ways, really. Anywhere from recognizing families that I see outside of the library to coming to the library and being able to have those connections with them, being able to go to my own childcare center and seeing paperwork on the table that, for wage enhancement. And I'm like, oh, are you doing the wage enhancement? And then like being able to talk to the teachers there about, well, this is how it looks from our side, and what are you all feeling to have those conversations and bring them back to the larger board as well, which then I know goes to, you know, people higher up at Johnson County Social Services and Board of Supervisors as well. I think the biggest thing is really making the connections in the community. So that when I see people outside of the specific library, like I ran into the person who does the Grant Wood CART in a, one of the centers that I was doing storytime at. And so being able to kind of sit in and listen to what she does and how she talks to the kids has really helped me, and not only in that specific situation, but really how everyone talks about children within the board and all of their partners has really given me a better understanding about the brain development of children, how they act and why they do the things that they do. So then also, when I see that in the library, it's a lot easier to, well, first of all, as an adult, manage my emotions, right? But also like give them, and help the parents understand that too. Like, I don't care if your kid is running around the, the learning center while I'm doing storytime. That's what they're supposed to do, right? So to be okay with that as an adult and to show parents, it's okay that that's happening. But also to like, to manage emotions, and then also being able to manage the area with the other kids, right? It's that like, not everybody has to stand up and run around. And if you don't like that, then you, you know, like you tell your friend that you don't like that. So having those kind of interactions, I think, and that, almost like a support network for like the actual day-to-day things that I do.
Thanks.
Thank you for your question.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Thank you. Yeah, thanks so much.
That's great, that's great.
So glad, takes me all year to think of what I'm gonna do.
I know, I just told her the other day, hey, do you know you're up on money? And she was like, yeah, I'm ready. I was like, oh, I don't know.
I was telling Andrew, I was like.
And I didn't, I wanted to be surprised, I was like, I'm not gonna ask her what it is.
I'm not gonna forget to go, like that year Jenny had to call me, like, where are you? I'm just gonna leave this for Tim.
That's fine.
All right, thank you so much, have a great night.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next on the agenda are our reports, Jenny?
Yes, we are in really good shape with the budget. We're under for the month, and the average is 83%, and we're at like 78, if I have to get down to where I am. Yeah, 78% for the total library services. They are doing a lot of planning with the programs for summer. And I know our summer, our programming budgets are tight. The, it's very fast getting eaten up, but we've also been ordering some new items for furnishing, some things that are gonna be going along with the new desk. And then Emily got a really great new rug for the storytime room that she's gonna start using for the learning center, so that'll be awesome. Do you guys have, did you guys have any questions about budget? Things, I think we will come out really well at the end of the year. So I can move on if you.
Uh huh, please.
The Friends did not have, don't have a meeting this month. They'll have their book sale next month, so they'll meet before their book sale gets started and be ready to roll. The book sales start June 7th, I think that's the Wednesday. So it starts that evening and then goes through the weekend, through Saturday. They'll get set up on the Saturday, or on that Wednesday. And then for the board report, or for my board report, the circulation desk is in. If you haven't had a chance to go into the library and see it, it's beautiful. We're, I'm still, we're still waiting on the delivery of the extra desks. That'll be the standing mobile units. I think everybody's really excited about those. It's much, it's more minimalist, so we had to think about, really had to think about where we were gonna put everything. Yeah, and we had, actually, so Kelly took on kind of that organization, but then one of our part-timers, Bethany, offered to help her with that. And she just did a fantastic job reorganizing the, and relabeling our drawers. And I mean, I opened the drawer and the pens and pencils, it used to just be like hundreds of them floating in the drawer, are all organized in these neat little cup areas of all for them, compartments of markers, pencils. It was like, wow, okay, cool. So, and figuring out that we don't need all the stuff we have, a lot of things out there that we just don't need out there. People were like, well, we don't have any drawers. And I'm like, that's exactly right, we don't have any drawers. So we might have to get up and move to the back if we need certain things or whatever. But it's, it's, just looks a lot cleaner. I did a lot more reorganizing this morning, actually, of some things that have been kind of sitting on the back counter. So it's very slowly but surely getting all in great shape. There was a chip in the laminate on the desk that probably happened when the crowner was being installed. Fortunately for me, our very good-eyed main contractor, Foreman, saw it and brought it to my attention, was really, he said, I'm just about sick over it. They are coming to fix that tomorrow and should be getting, should be getting it all set. We are also having them reinstall some, another flooring strip where the, where we moved out that used book sale area, that's just all torn up. So they're gonna be coming in to do that tomorrow as well, from the flooring company. That's separate from this project, but, so hopefully, I emailed them again with the mobile desk to see where we are with getting those done. They, they should be finished and in their hands, I would think, by now. So hopefully, we'll see them in the next week or two. And we are getting rid of the big old desk in the kids' area and putting a really cute little green one in there, bright green, so that'll be fun. And the next thing we're gonna do is like replacing the self-check. Chris actually ordered some smaller tables that we're gonna put those on, just kind of making everything just tidier and a little prettier looking. Those big, I don't know what we're gonna do with those big kiosk things that are there currently. I've tried to give them away. I had someone interested, but she's two hours away, and she doesn't have a way to come get them. I was almost ready to say that we would load them up in the back of my husband's truck and drive them to her, but I don't think he would appreciate me, so I didn't offer. And then I just wanted to.
Forgiveness, Jenny.
What's that?
Just ask for forgiveness.
And I didn't, I did wanna, the Statement of Concerns Policy is down below. It's a proposed new policy. I think I had read a couple of, this is a conversation that's been going on, on. I think I had read a couple of, this is a conversation that's been going on on the Iowa Lib Talk, which is our kind of group message board for libraries across the state. And that was one of the models that was out there was just having a separate, separating that out of collections. So it's not just very collection focused. It's just, I have a concern about something that's going on in the library. It's a one-page document that just kind of lays that out. And it is, I am, I put on the form. So the form is in here only because I changed the wording just to make it match that more and not saying this, what, about this piece of material. It's just about this resource, state, state and library resources. And then limiting that consideration for that 10 years time period and only for Johnson County and rural resident, or rural, Johnson County and North Liberty residents. So all that is just on the consideration form. I did not put it as part of policy. I think that it's a little bit neater and cleaner that way. So I'll let you guys decide if that's how you wanna do it. But I, I talked with Andrew quite a bit about this and some people were like, well, now it's gonna focus. It makes it like it's more focused on, you know, programs or whatever, but I don't think that's the case. I just think, you know, if someone has a concern, we're gonna listen to them. And this is just an easier way to do that and make it accessible to people. Obviously, it's, we're, we're following the same procedures we did. It's just removing it out of that collection development component. I am really excited. We found out last, a couple of weeks ago that we received a $20,000 grant from the American Library Association to put in button, push buttons for handicap accessibility for the restroom doors. This is something that's part of our strategic plan goals is making more accessible space. And Danny, our marketing assistant, this was her first grant that she wrote, and it's the biggest grant we've gotten. So it was very exciting.
That's a huge skill to have.
Yeah, it was fantastic. Yeah, Kelly and her, Kelly's gotten multiple grants, but this was the biggest grant we've asked for that. So very exciting to have that come through. And then just the community update. I'm, I'm just mentioning this right now. It's just in discussion phase. But the local history group has a lot of things, a lot of papers, a lot of photographs. So we talked with them just a little bit about how could we help them catalog all that stuff, archive it by scan, having it scanned in. We have a couple of pretty skilled people on staff who are interested in archival work. So one of them is probably leaving this summer, unfortunately, so we'll, but one of them is remaining. So we'll, it'll be a slow project if we get it going and we're gonna have to do a lot more research on it. But it's just something that we're hoping we can figure out the feasibility of and maybe go forth with. And then just the social workers in Eastern Iowa Public Libraries Program is wrapping up. We just went to a wrap-up event on that program. That was the program that brought Dr. Kendy to speak with us, which was very, very exciting. I think Zach, our social work student, learned a lot about managing events. He was very worried about going over capacity and I kept trying to nudge him a little to invite more people. And he was just so nervous that we didn't end up having as big a crowd as we could have had. But I think that's okay. It was a really cool intimate event with him. And Kelly did a, an excellent job moderating that. So we had about six, I think we had about 62, three people. He was about a half hour late.
Yes. Lindsay, Jesse and I, we were texting.
Kind of laughing about it because when he said that he was, it was technical difficulties, everybody was like, oh, come on. You know, it's not technical difficulties. Just fess up. You forgot. But that's okay. I still, I think it was really, really interesting how he handled it. And then I just wanted to mention this last thing on here that I have is donation and censorship. I had someone call last week and the message just said they wanted to talk to me about a book and I was, a specific book. And I was like, oh no, oh no. And she said, it's not bad. Don't worry. And so I called this person back and she wanted to tell me that she was so appreciative because she'd been going through the list of like books that have been banned or censored and checking off the ones she'd read. And she found one she hadn't read and she found that it was in the library. Um, and she wanted to tell me first that she appreciated that we had them available and, and to the diverse communities that we, we serve. And then she wanted to tell me that she appreciated that one of our staff took the time to mail it to her because she couldn't get to the library because of a physical ailment at the moment. So she wrote a check to pay for the book because it was damaged. When she got it, there were some loose pages and she wanted us to have a new copy. So she wrote a check for a new copy and then some quite a bit of more of a generous donation to cover the postage and the book and then just some extra money. So I thought it was super cool that she, that she did that. We had a really nice conversation and she wrote me a really nice note following that. So just having those upper conversations are just so important. I think we, we find that people, you know, understand better if we explain things and how we operate. So I think that's great. And then staff updates, we had, we do have three part-time staff who will be leaving this summer. They are all moving home or to other states, so out of, out of town. The first one is June 1st, so we are in the process of accepting applications. At the time that I wrote this, we had over 30. Now we are over 40 applications. So that's really good. We, you know, we'd seen a little bit lower applications over the last couple of years. So seeing that comeback is great. And the, the best part about that is we have some really, really strong applicants, a lot of them.
So you still put a pool, it's more of a, this pool is for all three positions.
We're gonna go ahead and hire at least three and potentially four. We've talked about potentially hiring two, to share a, a position and just work a few hours and hiring a couple of students, like high school students. We've had a lot of high school students applying this round. And I think there's some.
How many has, how many high school students have you employed in the past?
One.
Really? Okay.
And I just never, yeah, we've never had, been in the position where we felt like we had enough other staff to cover that we could have a, a, a high school student on staff, just for the amount of things they have to do and then just the, a level of responsibility. But I think at this point with our, with our crew and the way we have things set up, that we feel comfortable enough to have them just doing like, for instance, circulation desk and, and we're, we're comfortable with them being behind the desk and shelving and things of that nature. They, they will have to, we are gonna start requiring all of our part-timers to help be able to back up Storytime. If Emily's gone, but she'll train them and she feels confident that she can train them to do Storytime as well. So we'll be looking for, you know, some experience at least with kiddos. But there's, the app, applications are great, like really good, strong applicants on some of those high schoolers as well. We, I just love the opportunity of being able to give them their first job if we get a couple of them, you know, don't have had jobs. The younger, there is a couple of younger ones, but they're limited in the hours and they, so it doesn't quite meet the hours that we need. I'd so, we'll have to take a look at that, but we do, I think we have probably at least 12 candidates that we're gonna interview and maybe a couple more. We are gonna have Kelly and Andrew do the interviews this time around, just by, without, Jen typically does them with Kelly, but we've been trying to bring a, one of the other full-time staff in to do the interviews just because they work with them the most. So we, we wanna get their sense of who they think would be a good fit. And then Jen just, we, Jen and I talked today and just decided that she could step back from that and have Kelly just do the interview with Andrew's, the one that we picked for this one. We just have kind of rotate through the staff, so he'll be helping with that. And then just, we just had our Public Libraries of Johnson County meeting last week. And one of the things we discussed was that sunsetting, different materials. Iowa City has, had said that they have laptop or Chromebooks that go out with, in a bundle with hotspots. And they've seen that both decrease in the amount of checkouts, but, and that was something I was kind of looking at adding. So I was kind of glad to hear that side of it. Plus, they just said it's, it can get quite expensive if those are something that don't always get returned. And it gets pretty pricey. So I think that gave me a new perspective on that, that we probably won't start doing it. We are gonna introduce more hotspots. We have 10 right now. And I think we're gonna go up, add another probably 12 to 15 this next year. We have the funding for that. So deciding, looking at how many, depending on where we are as far as checkout. So those, they, they all circulate very regularly and are gone most of the time. So we'll keep working on them. But we also talked about potentially starting to look at getting the audio CDs out of the collection. I think ours will probably go sooner rather than later. They aren't circulating a lot. You know, there are still people that have them in their cars, so that makes it a little bit hard because we hate to not have some available. But I think we'll start shrinking that collection as it, as they just aren't publishing, so there aren't replacements to take the place of the ones as we lose them or they break or whatever happens with them or just aren't, they aren't being used anymore. So. And then just the Johnson County Fair, we typically spend the whole week there and have, it's really hard to staff. We had, we ask for volunteers and then our staff takes shifts, but it's, it's getting harder and harder to do that. So this year we were actually asked to come and be present on Kids' Day and have decided to forego the whole booth and just be there on Kids' Day. So Iowa City is gonna bring their Bookmobile, which is a really cool opportunity. And then we'll have a table with bookmarks and cloth bags at that event. And that is all that I have except for just the different staff reports, unless you guys have specific questions about those. Um, I will point out the Flock, the library fundraiser, Melanie's working on that right now. She brings up, brings out a pair. We are over 500 already for that.
Wow.
We were able to, it took me a while, but I was able to finally get a Venmo set up. It was a struggle to set up a nonprofit Venmo account. Especially because I don't have like direct access to the online, to the Friends' account. So I had to have, kind of rely on Sam from the Midwest one to get me the information I needed as I was going through. It went, it said, we're gonna put two tiny deposits in your account and then you need to tell me how, don't, tell us how much they are. So it took about three attempts to get that done. And then I finally called them and they just helped me on the phone. It was really easy, once I figured that out. But we have sold quite a few of the flamingos. We weren't sure how it would go. It was a little bit different. The flocking is a ton of fun. But at 31 days of working every single night or having, trying to get someone covered to, to do that flocking is, gets a little bit intensive, labor-intensive. And breaking that down hourly into the amount of money we were raising just was making it not really very feasible anymore. So trying it this way and, and it's just, it looks really cute. If you haven't been in, we've got flamingos all over the teen lounge wall. And people have decorated them and they're super cute. So yeah, and then we have new garden beds out there. Melanie talked about that too. So those are the main things. Any questions about the? All right.
I was gonna just say that about the audio CDs. Is that, yeah, I can see, cause I used to listen to them, but a lot of times they're scratched or you have like 10 CDs and it's just, you know, the Coralville Library has these little MP3 players that have.
The new Playaways.
Yeah. And so you just have, you know, you just have to supply your own headphones and then it already has the battery. And then you can just play and pause whenever you need. You don't have to worry about like where it is, you know, because it's not on your phone. It's just this little tiny thing that you can carry around that has the book. So it's really neat. Yeah.
Yeah, they did. We actually were at Coralville for the meeting and she was showing us the new teen lounge area that they have just redone. And so that was one of the things we talked about was the Playaways. I haven't talked with Andrew about that as an option, but it might be an option as we look at doing away with it.
Well, I, I was just thinking it's just easier to carry or, you know, just a little tiny MP3 player instead of trying to change out the CD every time.
Yeah, and audios just aren't going out like they were.
Yeah.
A lot of people don't have them, so.
Or just using, or I also just use Overdrive and just use the audio books online.
A lot of people are doing, but the, the people who don't have the capability of doing that in their car.
Right, yeah.
If they have an older vehicle, I mean, even a couple of years old, really.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
With those Playaways, do they have, do you know, do they have a like auxiliary cord that they give out with those? So you can?
I don't, do they do?
I don't know. It's just a little MP3 player with a battery. And then it has like a plug-in for you to put your headphones in. But I would imagine that it's the same thing that if you had the auxiliary cord, plug it into your car and do it. Yeah.
So that may be another option for us at some point. All right.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the policy review, which we can review, but we cannot approve without our quorum.
Yeah.
So let's talk about the, and we really can't change the bylaws without lawyers and council members.
All right. And I don't know if this is correct. Did you guys, I feel like we probably did this last year and it just, I haven't changed the date because we can't do anything with it anyway, because it has May 21 on this thing.
Oh, yeah.
So I probably can update that at, once we have a chance to actually say that we approve of them. Or did anyone, does anyone see anything that stood out that needs to be addressed or maybe looked at as?
I think the only, are we talking bylaws? Yeah. I think the only thing I saw was the first time it referenced the, the member from the Johnson County member on the board. I was curious if that just implied an unincorporated Johnson County member? And then later on in the document, it does say unincorporated. So that kind of cleared.
Rural resident.
Yep. That was the only thing I saw.
Do you think it's clear enough the way it is then, Brady, or?
Yeah, yep, I do.
Oh, I see. It's just in the next section.
They address it in how the, that person's appointed. So yeah, I think that's good.
And the Board of Trustees or the Board of Supervisors is really on top of it. They always get, get with me right away. She emailed me in early April and said they would get it advertised. So I'm assuming that's done. Our city one hopefully is also being advertised here shortly because we have both, Jesse and Chris will be done.
Are they both at the end of their two terms?
Yes. So we'll have a new city and a new rural person, starting hopefully in August, since we don't have a July meeting.
I'll try to make that one on time, since I forgot and didn't come at the early.
Our orientation time.
Yeah. Oh, everyone's already here.
It's old hat for you now. Um, and then if you guys wanna talk at all about the statements of concern, Jen was like, why? It says statements instead of statement. And it's supposed to say statements. That is a, because it's, it's talking plural. If it's just, it's for anyone who wants to make a statement of concern. So it's, that's the correct way for that to read. I know, I think Ames has one and theirs is called Expressions of Concern. I think statement sounds a little more applicable for us. And it's pretty much taken directly from the, I borrowed a lot from Debut County. They had a really good one. And then I just, I mean, I did some things on our own. And I guess I did include, I forgot that I did include that once it's reviewed, it won't be reviewed again for 10 years. I thought that I had taken that out. Or not included those, but I did end up including them. So it's actually probably okay that it's not gonna be approved this month. I'd like to reformat it just a little bit as far as like making it more of an outline form like all the others are instead of bulleted. But otherwise, is there anything that anyone had questions about with it? Or we can just talk about it next month and kind of table it for this month?
Cause we talked about this last time too, right? At our last meeting.
That was when we were talking about including it into collection development. And then we decided to pull it out of there, or I decided to pull it out of there and propose just a separate policy.
So the board's recommendation is not go on, on a, if somebody does have a concern, is not then passed on to the city council? Is that right?
Okay. Well, not under the way we have it worded. I mean, that, that could be. No, I mean, at this point, it would stop with the board unless the council were.
And I'm, and I'm okay with that.
I had a question about it.
My head for some reason, it got passed on.
No, the policies have to go through council approval. So I need, I would take this to the council and look.
Okay, I got you. Maybe that's where my head.
Look at it. And they'll, they see this because I submit the packet to them as well. And then it basically, the end, the note at the end just includes the same. The last paragraph is the same basic paragraph that is in the program policy and the meeting room policy. I just wanna make it kind of driven home for everybody and very consistent across the board, that piece of it. And then the other, the first paragraph is just, was actually, is part of the introduction of the Debut County one. But I felt like it fit better down at the end, kind of as part of a note. But I'm completely open to reforming or reorganizing it however you guys would want.
I like the format of it. I think it's fine.
Yeah, I feel that's good.
And as mentioned, so then just, there's not really any big changes in the actual Statement of Concern form except just using the word resources verse, versus materials. except just using the word resources verse, versus materials. Just kind of changing it out so it's not so specific to material.
Unsafe seems like a, not the right adjective, but I don't, I can't find one that's better.
Want it to be that, because I think um, it's important to clarify for, I think, I mean, I think a lot of times when they, people object to this, that is fear, they just don't realize it's fear that they're feeling.
Yeah, I looked and I couldn't find a better ad.
Uncomfortable, uncomfortable.
And that wasn't, yeah, that wasn't right either.
Yeah, I don't know.
Un- uncomfortable is too easy.
Yeah.
I kind of balked at that word too, but it's, it's the right word.
Digging through sixty thesaurus entries trying to.
You figure out a different one for next month, next month.
And I couldn't.
Talk about it again, we can. And if you guys know me, I'm really about not having more policies, so introducing two policies in a year is like really hard for me to add more policies, but I think these are important ones.
Absolutely.
So, well, we can, yeah, I guess we can defer that, table that till next month, so if you can have them vote on it. So that is basically it, except for the beautiful pictures, if you guys saw of the new circulation desk and the, the um, acoustic panels, which just look like art there and they work so well, it's amazing.
It's amazing.
How much they tamp the noise down.
All right. Our next agenda item is to reflect upon the self-assessment that was homework that I'm hope, we all did. With little X's and everything.
And that is really, yeah, that's just more for you guys to do on your own, I don't know that you need to talk about it.
Well, right, right.
Something to consider as people are.
If there was, but, but if there was anything that someone saw as they were taking it that they would like to talk about, please.
Absolutely.
Please, please say something. I was, as you would imagine, generally positive as I assessed myself.
You should be. I feel pretty, I mean, this board is pretty invested and present, so I appreciate that.
Very good.
Well, it's no voting.
No voting?
No voting.
Agenda item number seven, or number nine, is there any old business that we need to attend to? No? Any new business anyone wants to bring up? Very good, does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Very good, the meeting is adjourned, we will see you next in June.